Oh, Gina, would you mind grabbing some water and putting it out? I, I, oh, Dave's doing it. I've got mine. I, I just forgot to put it out for you guys.
No, it doesn't. It's just water.
So, I don't know, do you like it over here on this side? If you, I'm trying to decide how to do this, but I'll have Jess and Sharon over there. And then, if you want... Could be upgraded.
Good change.
But if you go, if you go... Oh, well, I was just gonna say, if you want to sit by, we could have, this council just shift, you know? We'll still have the chair right in the middle, but just have, you know, so that if you two want to meet together. There's the curmudgeon. Get it buried up. Now Julie, we should, Julie, she's at... I think so. Because I'm high risk, I'm overweight, and I don't have any other underlying symptoms, but that's that. And my mom's eighty-eight, you know? We both very mild. Krebs is because of dairy farms.
It is. Got all sorts of...
Oh, yeah. You know it. Yes. Okay, I do not, I do not have gum. And I sneezed, and I sneezed into my gum. Thank you. Paul, I'll have you start these two. This is, this is for you, Eck. So you're gonna just tell me what you want. So some of that for your spouse and such, what you know on that. You just send that down. Oh, thank you. I'm Carl. Still, still waiting to hear. We've been trying to get all the John for a couple days now. And they need to get all the...
I tried to call him today, too.
Just checked in with his daughter to see if I hear him. And then, Paul, this is for John, to write, just writing. We'll get him something to do with it.
Something, something.
Right. Oh, and you can run it, too. Yeah, he called me. He called me on the phone.
Hello, everybody. Nice to have you here. Really is nice having you come to hear what this story on was talking about.
Gina.
Very much. Taking the time, right? Excuse our council invite tonight. We begin tonight with an opening by Ashland G. Werth.
All right. I'd like to start with a quote. "There are no constraints on the human mind, no laws around human spirit, no barriers to our progress, except those we erect ourselves, and that's from all of the great ones who have made the progress." I'd like to finish my opening with a formative text. Able to assemble here. Dear faithful Father, for the blessing you have bestowed upon us, and the special you have bestowed upon us, and also the light you have bestowed upon us, and the understanding you have bestowed upon us, the blessing you have bestowed upon us. Dear faithful Father, just further we can aspire, and further we can sustain. The vast sea of us blessed because we are the master of this fire, so we will never abandon. The vast sea of us, our help for workers, of those who are in search of help, and of social work. They will bless each one of us with protection and wisdom. And I just beg to pray, Father, that the vast sea of goodness may turn, so that people will be comforted, that our fears rise and cover their living, to bear them in their soul. As a child, we have to see, cross our paths, and we have wisdom and inspiration. As a child, we meet the challenge of our life, and to do the best that we can, to do what is right in our time. Please, dear Father, we will not choose this time.
And...
I pledge allegiance to your flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we need to prove our agenda first, Mike. All right. Can we review, follow up on events? Okay, was there, well, we're proving this, or last meeting. All right.
Hi. How are you seeing, so, how are you seeing Mary?
Back in my old spot.
Yeah, sure. That's a fourth one. I don't have any plans to present at this time. We have financial reports on the device there. And the other two items that I have to cover is, we made some progress on the north operations center. I'd take a visit up there. I'd schedule that here in the future. If you would like to do that, I can have you just schedule that. You know, maybe we could get more sides if you want to take a little more time. I'd like to do that. I'll have Jeanne send down a photo. J U B. If you think of J U B. I'd put that up there. Also, I just want to let you know that it worked out for our last meeting, the senior location. Boy Garrison, that he's going to retire. He's done an excellent job. Initially, he planned to retire April first this year. COVID, he has stayed on, and is willing to stay on until the first of April. We're actually searching for a new director. Well, we'll be a new director. And we'd like to get that position filled by the first of January, because there are several other openings for directors. And help pardon throughout the state, to try and get a little bit ahead of the race here. And we are going to schedule our first initial interviews for thirteen hours. By our first or second evening, as in the last. So it's probably, uh... Also, I'll wait until, I think, it's open until this Friday. Or open until the second of July. You have some good outfits.
Very good outfits.
That's all I had to report this time. All right. So my special interest tonight is, uh, first of all, uh... Very elemental health area plans. That's it. That's it. Might have to be. Well, we'll jump to the next one. It's kind of this for Tom Bieber and Sean Bushman. General comment here. This is, this is a public meeting, so we don't need entertainment here.
This is a public meeting, isn't it?
Not a public, so we won't be entertaining public comments, but we have a... Erickson received a lot of questions and concerns of the... Sense of handling the board of philosophies of council. Making two sides of comments on it. And we would encourage you, if you have questions about the, uh, trends of district and operations and things, through, uh, here the board meetings. There's a board of trustees, there are currently eighteen people, serve on that board, from various areas. And, uh... Encourage to contact any event if you have concerns. Also, uh, next board meeting for, uh, board meetings, seeing T. Ward, that is on, uh, November eighteenth. So, uh, we encourage you to tell the ten dollars, and maybe your questions or concerns, probably be answered directly from, uh, the senior T. Ward in the meeting. So we encourage you to do that. With, with that announced, we go, and turn the time over to Todd. I appreciate it.
Thanks. So I'm Sean Bushman. I'm the, the count, uh, the representative for the council. And Todd is, I'm more of the thirty thousand foot perspective, so we brought Todd along for, for the details. But if I get anything wrong, um, I've been wondering, actually, for a while, how often I should update this group. You know, I was thinking maybe once or twice a year, or maybe just as, as needed. And so when Mr. Butters called Todd and said it'd be a good time to do it, I was excited, because we actually have a few good updates to talk about. And I guess, in the, in the context of questions, you know, if there's somebody that had some, I'd love to visit with them, too, and do the best I can to address them, so that is. So if you're okay with it, I have just a brief overview, just to put it in context, and then the three updates of COVID, a service expansion, and a property facility grant. So first in context, and I, I, my reading glasses. Okay. No, I just screwed it bad. So the CVTD annual budget's about seven million, of which five million comes from point three percent sales tax. Uh, and the rest comes from federal grants, and there's a few small things like advertisements and some shared funds from southeast Idaho. Because of the kind of replacement cost and frequency of buses, as well as gas price changes, you know, our budget can be a bit of a roller coaster every year, but we plan conservatively. There have been a couple of years, I think, when we've been in deficit for bus purchases, but we have a fund balance to kind of accommodate that. Uh, but aside from those years, in the last fifteen years I've been here, it's, it's been a conservative budget. See, for service, CVTD has fourteen fixed routes and wagon wheel design, a parrot transit routes that cover the entire valley, and then there's that Preston route that's co-funded with southeast Idaho. And then there's some special events, such as county fair, pumpkin walk. Our average fixed route ridership peaked around twenty twelve and has slowly declined since then. Following kind of a national trend, and there's some interesting reasons for that, as, as more research is done. This has concerned us, and like as demographics and situations change, we're researching transit options to be more productive and efficient, and one of those is the loop, which I'll talk about in a minute. Uh, right now, I think it's about three dollars per trip for the fixed, um, route, which is, I don't know, less than half of UTAs. It's, we, we stack it pretty well. And then, let's see. Oh, yeah. And so, yeah, if you have any in-depth discussion of all the options and the kind of things that CVTD is doing for the ridership is outside the purview of this discussion, but if you have any questions, I love to talk service, and I can talk a long time, so, like I said, let me know. Uh, zero fare, as long as it makes financial sense, CVTD plans to continue with zero fare. No transit agency anywhere can operate without a tax base, uh, with or without a fare. And at this point, an added fare would not supply enough funds for appreciable service improvements, just because of the cost benefit ratio, and we're a relatively small transit agency. However, we do five-year assessments about the feasibility and value of fare, of the zero fare policy. So it's, we're looking at it every, every now and then. For the board, uh, you said eighteen members. I, I think we're missing one right now. I think we have nineteen. And, uh, and that comprises thirteen votes. It's big. But the contribution of all the municipalities has really proven valuable over the years at times. It's, uh, good to have buy-in. Uh, so, now with our three updates, the first is COVID. You know, because of about, that about twenty percent of our riders are, they have no other transportation options, we have kept rudimentary service running, um, and this is consistent with the rest of the country. There are safety measures. We've got increased bus cleaning, you know, mask mandates, uh, employee care, such as, you know, options for drivers over sixty-five, things like that. And Todd can go into those details if you have questions about them. Uh, we did get some of the CARES Act grant funding. I think many entities in the valley did. We got a one-time grant of five million and to wade through COVID. And we didn't ask for it. It just came through that formula process, but we've used some of it for the increased safety cost and put the rest in the fund balance uh, for property and capital and things like that, that we'll need. And as COVID drags on, uh, we're drawing into that money. For service expansion, uh, the main story is the loop, which we started in January twenty twenty, and it was just gaining momentum when COVID hit. Um, it's a bit of a different paradigm than what CVTD usually does with the wagon wheel. Um, it's essentially a continuous loop from Walmart North to Walmart South to the university, both in clockwise and counterclockwise directions. And, um, it was, usually it takes about six months for a route to pick up steam, and even in the month and a half, it was picking up steam at a, at a higher rate than expected. It hits well over sixty percent of the destinations that people want in the valley, or in Logan, such as the shopping, the, the university, downtown Logan, stuff, stuff like that. And it needs to run for about a year, six months to a year, for us to get data so that we can adjust other routes, because it's gonna cause a little bit of a paradigm shift for our wagon wheel, uh, philosophy. Um, and by the way, this loop was only possible because of that, uh, ten percent of the county roads tax. We, we had a little bit extra each year, you know, kicking around, but never enough to do anything meaningful with, and with that, uh, ten percent, uh, we were able to do this, so thank you very much. This does increase our tax rate, though, now to point three two five percent. Which is three dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand dollar spend. Finally, our facility grant, um, as you heard on the news, we were awarded an amount, uh, and matching. There was an awarded amount, and they have a matching requirement. Uh, the grant from the FDA was for eighteen million, and, with a twenty percent matching requirement. And we received this because we were prepared. Uh, we had the, the fund balance saved up for our twenty percent, and we had the property already purchased. So, uh, you know, when you, whenever you're dealing with federal grants, you gotta have, you need your ducks in a row, as I'm sure you're all aware. We just happened to have our ducks in a row. It was good timing. Um, the land purchase happened in twenty-ten, and the context for that was that around twenty, two thousand eight, uh, we had a couple of bad, bad air years. Um, we had some assessments of cost of serving and keeping the buses warm, and, and, you know, some damage from cold air. Just kind of, not huge, but building, and then some concern over some space constraints, gasoline, and then future space constraints if we did, if we added some buses for things like the loop. Anyway, after going over those options, the board approved the purchase of some property uh, up at about three thousand North, three hundred West. Uh, and that happened in twenty-ten, and the funds at that time came from a federal grant with the help of a Utah congressional delegation. Um, and since that time, um, we've just been saving up money as best we could. Some years we couldn't, others we could, and waiting for the timing for the grant for the facility. Uh, but the main desire was for indoor storage, um, more flexible space, you know, improved gasoline storage, the ability to deal with more buses, um, uh, from services up to the loop. And then, as mentioned, yeah, so I, I skipped my notes and told you without it. So, uh, that's kind of all the updates I have. Uh, do you have any questions for me?
Maybe I get to know, but maybe I don't want to just clarify. You mentioned that the cost is three dollars for fixing that. Is that three dollars per person? And how do you guys figure that out? I know that's a question you need to ask.
Yeah, yeah, because there, there's some jargon in transit, um, so, you know, ridership is one of them. A trip is anytime someone gets on the bus. So if I were to, um, get on the bus in Providence, ride it into the transit center, and then, you know, do a transfer and go up to USU, that would be two trips.
What's per person? And for...
It's, yeah, we can't measure per person without, you know, invading their privacy with phones, but all we can do is count how many people get on the bus, so we have to kind of call it per trip. But it's kind of similar, but with transfers, you know, it can be multiple trips per person in a day sometimes. I didn't do, sorry. It, it's tough, and ridership is another term that's used a lot, but it just means the number of riders to get on. Yeah.
Tom, um, you mentioned the route into, um, the Preston. What kind of ridership do you have on that?
So I don't have the numbers before me, but it is twice in the morning coming in, twice in the evening going back out, and, um, it's generally been a, a full bus. Yeah, like, when I say full, I mean, you can cram, you know, fifty people in a bus, but it's more like... Do you have the numbers?
I can give you an approximate idea. So it's, it's about fifteen to twenty-five people. It varies. It goes up and down just based on people's need for a day. So, but there's consistent ridership per, per run, so there's two in the morning, two in the afternoon. Somewhere in that fifteen to twenty-five. Sometimes you'll have more, sometimes you'll have thirty, you know, so, yeah.
With the COVID sidelines, how, how many would you normally allow without the COVID sidelines? And now how many are allowed with the COVID?
Allowed on a bus?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that usually only happens, we only get buses that full with standing room only for the routes that go up to campus. And, uh, yeah, yeah.
So, so we fill to the standing line, and so depending on what that is, so let's say university students, that's probably about sixty-five people. Currently, we're, we're not doing more than fifty. We're not having those types of loads at this time. So, I mean, typically, you're gonna see a, a bus that's really full, again, twenty people going up to the university, but, yeah. The, the loop that, that Sean mentioned has kind of spread out that ridership, too, which has been a natural good thing during COVID. Because we have more frequent buses coming more frequently, they're able to get on at different times, and so it naturally kind of spreads that out a little bit.
Some of the county routes were full at times, too.
Correct.
But I, I just, yeah, with COVID, there's fewer people riding.
I mean, just to give you an idea, pre-COVID, our ridership would hover between fifty-five hundred, sixty-five hundred a day. And right now, we're at about three thousand. So, uh, you know, we're, we're a little bit about half, or a little bit less than half of, again, which is similar to what we're seeing nationwide.
I have another question. I know it's in down in my neighborhood, but there's quite a few young kids that are riding the bus, like, assuming they're just going to school. How many, you know, how many routes do you have without?
So I, I think I can take this one. No, no, stay here, because there's most questions I can't... Yeah, so, uh, there, there was a time when, um, the junior high and high school kids were choosing to get on CVTD instead of the school buses, and we had to, uh, visit with various entities to discourage that. Um, we will have students that will get on the buses after school's over to maybe go into town or go visit friends. Also, like, for example, in Hyrum, uh, you know, the, the kind of, I don't know the district rules for sure, but it seems like the bus, school buses will not take care of somebody within a mile of the school. And, uh, there's quite a bit of population there, and we will get, it's like a little clown car of students coming off the bus onto Mountain Crest that are, that live in West Hyrum that are just under a mile. Too far to walk, you know, and, and too close to get a school bus. So we will get some patronage, especially the high schools, but, uh, we don't replace the school buses.
All, all of those fares are free, they're not charged?
Correct, yeah, zero fare policy. So, um, with the charge, it makes up a very, very small portion of the income of a, of a transit agency. And with the size of CVTD, it's extremely small, where it's not enough to really add appreciable service. Um, you must add in the fare boxes, uh, new staff to count them and to repair them. And we've had a couple different assessments that said this is what it's gonna cost conservatively, liberally, you know, here's different fare fees, and it just didn't come out. The math didn't. Uh, you do have reduced ridership. That's probably one of the reasons why ours is three dollars a trip and UTAs is seven, because we have more riders. Um, even with the decreased ridership, we have, we do better than most. So, um, it's, it's kind, it's a philosoph, it's, it's a philosophy to, to maximize riders, get people on the bus, and away from the cars and the traffic if you can. But like, like we said, we're doing these assessments. When it becomes mathematically feasible and the value's not there anymore, we'll, we'll have to charge fare.
You mentioned you got some money for COVID, and you definitely share that. And, uh... Isn't there a time frame that has to say, I mean, you said you put that in a fund account?
Well, I want to correct that just a little bit. We didn't put COVID money in the fund. We didn't put COVID money in the fund balance. COVID money has to be used for COVID. So, what it does is, the COVID money allows us to operate and deal with the additional costs of COVID, potential loss in revenue, those types of things, and then it allows us to put money from the local sales tax in the fund balance. So, anything that the COVID money defers as far as a cost, we can use local money to put in the fund balance. COVID money has very strict regulations that we have to follow, so I just want to clarify that.
Kind of fund balance?
Got to go look, I think...
Before or after we...
Yeah, we're going to do this facility, so, I mean, a big portion of that fund balance is designed for this facility. So, there's two big things that we deal with, is facility and then bus replacement. Bus replacements are something that we have to do on a fairly regular schedule. Every two to three years, we're replacing somewhere between two and five buses, and each bus is about five hundred thousand dollars, so we have to come up with that local match for that. So, it's a pretty intensive capital funding need that we have, so I'd have to go look. I didn't look before that. I'll get you that answer. Can I email that to you and give you that answer on the fund balance? I don't know off the top of my head. I don't want to misstate that.
You mentioned earlier that you, I think it's for the ten percent.
Yeah.
We didn't have any say in that. And I want that to be known.
Okay.
We didn't say in that, but we were hoping we'd gotten all of it. And there were portions of, I think, that you guys could have, you could have even been higher per second on that.
Well, we're grateful for it. It was able to allow us to expand.
You don't thank the right people.
Right, yeah.
It just made it sound like we were in charge of that, and I didn't know we didn't have a big set of that actually. Anyway, I have another question, is how, during that, you purchased that land, it went back to 2010. Yeah, I mean, you're talking, you started in one year?
Nineteen ninety-two, the year we started service.
Ninety-two, and in 2010, so, that's, how do you acquire, you're trying to be frugal and good tax payer money, how do you acquire that much money to be able to plant, to grow, and yes?
So, again, that was purchased with a federal grant for eighty percent of that purchase, twenty percent was local money, that Congressman Bishop and other members of the delegation helped us secure. So, again, it's just part of the planning, looking at the population, looking at how, you know, density and housing is coming into the valley, and just trying to keep up with that demand.
So, you think you project...
Somewhere between eighteen and twenty-five million dollars. I mean, but again, that may be done in phases, that may, you know, that's what we're working on right now.
But you got eighteen million dollars.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be a lot more money.
We'll have to add twenty percent, which is, we'll put it at twenty-two and a half million.
You were, you were noted, you were noted as the top ninety of the district in the nation.
In 2016?
Twenty-sixteen, I thought.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen.
So, there...
How did you get to that point? What's so cool about it?
I don't know. I don't know how to answer that, so... That's, it's an award that was given by the National Association that we participate in. There's a couple of different associations out there. Yeah, I don't know how to answer the question.
But we do, I mean, there's, there are some things that are, we have quarterly service reports, and our metrics are always good, our safety is good, you know, our ridership has been good, and when I say good, I mean, you know, above average, I mean, we, things, we have good audits, our budgets are conservative, so there's a good reason we got some awards. I don't think they just take turns. We try hard, especially, and I got to give kudos to the general manager, he tries your heart.
Another thing I think will be very helpful, you mentioned, were one board member...
No, we're full, we have nineteen board members.
Well, Lloyd was on it, and he got off, but we replaced him already, yeah, so I was, I misspoke.
I was wondering what that process was, you know, as far as, because there are probably a lot of people who like to stir on that.
So, they're appointed, so you guys appointed me back in January, and the city, each city council will appoint a representative from their city, and then Logan City has quite a few that they appoint. So, the mayor appoints them after the city council or county council votes?
So, it is appointed in, you're independent, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not involved.
Right, you're involved, so it is the city, so the entities that are, that's the point in the vote.
Nice asking question. Sean, or... I don't want to get you to commit to confuse with Darren. How much of a vote do you have on the board?
I have one-third of a vote.
One-third of a vote.
Yeah, nineteen members, thirteen votes, based on the miles that go in each municipality.
So, that's based on nonincorporated area basically. Is there a way that that can revisit, revisit it, or maybe, maybe so that counties represented can have a half or a full vote, something like that?
That is an awesome question that we are dealing with this very year. State law talks about miles driven in a municipality, so unless that is changed, we can't. Our hands are tied, but we'd like to. I think we'd like to see other ways to try to have representation. Good question.
You have a question? So, I've got a couple of them. How's the budget determined each year? Who does the budgeting process within that?
So, we prepare a budget, we present it to the board, we have some workshops, and, but ultimately, the board adopts the budget.
So, the board adopts the budget as presented?
Well, not, I mean, the board has the authority to change the budget, I mean, but, yeah.
So, the facility, the land for the facility is purchased in 2010. Ridership's been fallen since 2012. The budget continues to go up for the facility. Under what circumstances would you pull back from making an investment in something that has reduced ridership year over year over year? Where would the line be to say, it doesn't make any sense to drop another eighteen million dollars into something that has decreased ridership each year? I mean, that seems to be completely counterintuitive to me, where, as the county, we have increased utilization of what we're investing in to meet that, and yet you're increasing funding for something that has decreased utilization?
So, I don't know what the specific, you'd have to talk to the board. I can give you a specific to the grant, so the grant...
Well, I'm just talking about, not, I mean, if somebody gave me a pile of money, I'd figure out how to spend it, but...
So, this grant is specific...
Nobody gives me a pile of money, so I'm just looking at, as a wise steward of public resources, where would the point be where you say, it doesn't make sense to spend this money, even though we have it?
At this point, the federal transit administration's awarded the grant, it's specific to transit, it can't be used for any other purpose other than public transit. So, it has a very specific purpose, we can't use it for anything else. The money's been awarded, so at this point, if we were to try to give it back, we would never get federal money again, I wouldn't say never. The likelihood that we would not get federal money again would be very high, because you've taken something they've obligated to us and said, eh, just kidding, we didn't really want that, we're going to send it back. And so, not only for the facility, but you're talking the ongoing funding for the operating, the money that we use to replace buses. So, I think it's, how do we, how do we, why stewards with money that's been awarded? How do we build a facility that will work probably for the next fifty years? Depending on what ridership is, there's still, as Sean said, there's twenty percent of the ridership that, when we were telling people, do not use the system unless it's absolutely essential, that was their way to get around, to jobs, to education, to medical trips, this was their only source of transportation. That group of folks is only going to continue to grow, but, so, the facility and the investment we're making is for that folks, and then trying to make it as good as possible, as efficient as possible, like doing the loop, so that other folks will say, no, I can get out of my car, and we can have an impact on traffic congestion and things of that nature with the growth that's coming. That's a good question.
Can I jump in too?
Please.
I'm kind of, I got an underlying theme with that question that, the board especially, it behooves us to really try to think progressively, wisely, efficiently, and so, that's something I take serious, and I think, I think most of us on the board too. As far as this property per se, it's got intrinsic value with the bus costs and the cold air and the bad air and the warming up. I mean, twenty-five buses warming up for a half hour every morning without anyone even on them. I don't know, anybody with lung problems doesn't appreciate that. So, we've got some intrinsic value in this per se, but I like your question because it really puts a burden on those of us in the board to really think about this in our decisions, in everything we do, from the budget to capital.
Thank you. I appreciate very much sharing what's going on. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, if you have others, I'll try my best, and if I can't, I can reach out to the general manager.
Do you have a comment period during your agenda and stuff, that anyone that's, you know, within the county of ridership, whatever they be, speaking?
Yeah, very first, actually.
Questions, and then very, and speak, and hopefully get answered and stuff?
We do have more meetings tomorrow night, actually.
More meetings tomorrow night?
Fourth Wednesday is five forty-five PM, and right now, they are virtual.
Which is, they're published, you'll get the agenda, you should have already received the agenda, so...
Links for if people want to...
The links to participate commercially or on my agenda.
Okay, but normally, they're at BATC.
Probably if they don't have the info, they can go to the website, I'm sure, to get it.
The public notice website, yeah, they can get information.
But we, right after we approve minutes, it's open for a public hearing, so it's the first thing that happens.
That's an interview, that's a pretty good pot of money that you're dealing with, you know, it's, it's paid the money to a tax payer, and so, I appreciate you coming and sharing what you could here, but if they want more, they can actually...
And really...
It's all virtual, so...
Large board of footwork.
Yeah.
Is there any contact information for those board members on the website? Do you want to chat with their...
Thought there was, it's not, it's on the Utah Public Notice Website for sure, on our website, I'm not sure if it's got contact.
It was one...
At one time it was, but we've been redesigning our website. But the Utah Public Notice Website for sure.
Thanks, anything?
Thank you very much.
We got no sound, because somebody's powered this. There were mental health area planned, and tonight, I hope nobody's disappointed, I hope you didn't come for that. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for...
Chairman, the director of the Health Department's here, I don't know if...
Oh.
He was, okay.
Yeah, this is for mental... This is for mental health. You're not, you're not going to report on mental health, are you, Lloyd?
Absolutely not. Not your own, anyway.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to our public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, butcher shop rezone. Request to rezone two point two seven acres from the agricultural A-ten zone to the industrial zone, located approximately thirty-five sixty-five west, twenty-two hundred south in Wellsville. This is a public hearing, this item has been reviewed by the County Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have given their recommendations. Chris, is there anything that you would like to say about this request at this time before we open it to the public?
I'm going to make one, just kind of FYI information for you. It appears to me, I was going through this packet, and it looks like for your hearing, the twenty twenty dash ten has the correct information attached to it. When you go to the initial consideration where you have the ordinance and then that piece...
I fixed it.
What did you fix?
I just, the ordinance itself.
Okay, what did you fix?
I just put the right information on it.
Thank you. You didn't got it, so never mind. Nothing happened, it's perfect. So, no, I don't have any specific comments. You have the summary from what the planning commission reviewed, with their recommendation back to the council, but I'm happy to address any questions from their review of that proposal.
Any questions for Chris before we open it to the public? Okay, we will open this item up, this ordinance up for public hearing, and invite anyone who would like to comment on this rezone request to step forward and to use the microphone, please state your name.
My name's William Jensen, Bill Jensen. I'm the owner of the property that we're talking about. I don't know if any of you know even what we're planning on doing there, or if you'd like me to explain it a little bit.
Well, yeah, go ahead, I mean...
I'm not Bill the Miller.
Yeah.
I have a cattle ranch there that's been in my family since nineteen eighteen, my grandfather bought that land. Soon after that, he built a barn there, and in that barn, he provided the space to hang the beef that we butchered every year, plus the deer and elk back then was a big thing also. But since then, over the years, we added a electric cooler. We always killed our beef there, that's where we butchered them, and we hung them in the cooler there, and that was just our annual ritual to kill our beef there. A lot of the neighbors, I think, brought animals up there and hung them in our coolers also. But the problem we got nowadays is, to get a beef butchered in this valley is ridiculous. We just had ten of them butchered in September, and I told my son-in-law, when you go to drop them off at Thayer's, see if you can get an appointment for six more that we have that are ready to cut up right now. He calls me and he says, Thayer's told me January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one was the next available date they had. So, we got six beef there sitting there that are ready to be butchered that will, by then, you know, you just will shoot them. So, that's our problem, we have no way of butchering our beef. We have them beef sold, if we can get them butchered and make meat, you know, produce the meat that we need to, we have people that want to buy them right now, but we just... So, me and my wife have decided, you know, it's time for us to step up and either sell the ranch and build houses on it, which, if we build house, there are going to be a lot of houses, let's put it that way. I am a contractor, and that's what I do for a living. I don't want to do that, it's been in my family for a hundred years. We want to make the ranch viable, and that's hard nowadays. We put everything we have into it, and we get nothing out of it, except the lifestyle, and I'm not complaining, I love it. We love it, and we'll never change if we don't have to. But someday, government, whatever, is going to push us out, and we'll have to do something different. But for now, our plan is to build a little butcher shop, a little better facility than we have in the old white barn. We want to build something that we can wash down, keep sterile, make a nice clean product that we can go from farm to table. That's the new trend across the country, to be able to know where your beef's coming from. You can go out in my field, and you can look at how my cattle are taken care of, you can go to the corral and pick out one of my fat steers and say, I want a that one, and in two weeks, we'll have it cut and wrapped and butchered, and you're on your way, and you know there's, it's hormone-free, it's good for you, it's good quality protein. We're not planning on butchering, you know, what our plan is, is we'd like to be able to do a hundred of our own cattle a year. Now, a portion of that's going to be our call cattle, which are our older cows that are not productive for us anymore, but they're still fat, herford cattle that will make great hamburger, and we have a plan for that also. That call meat, some of that is going to go to some of the homeless programs, or not homeless, the food bank programs, and one that me and my wife are involved in, that we want to be more involved in, because we used to have a bunch of apartments up the university. There's a lot of students up there that don't have the money to eat nothing but Roman noodle, would like to, and they do have a pantry up there, we'd like to provide some of that call beef to them also. But our plan is to do about a hundred cattle of our own, and the law says if we build a butcher shop, we can do our hundred plus twenty percent more. But we would like to do probably a hundred... But we would like to do probably a hundred to maybe a hundred and fifty more is what we're looking at. We have a gentleman, Forrest Olson. He's, most of you know him from Macy's, he's a butcher there. He has a dream to own a butcher shop someday, so it's a perfect program. It helps us, it helps him become self-sufficient with his family. And so it's a win-win all the way around, you know. We're not planning on hauling in semi-loads of cattle. What we're planning on doing is butchering our own cattle, have some of the neighbors which have no way to have theirs butchered at this time unless they have a date, a year, a year and a half in advance. We want them to be able to bring their cattle and have them butchered also. There's a lot of families now that are trying to raise one or two beef for theirself, or a lamb or a pig. And they have no way to, they just have no way to get them butchered. So it is for us, but it's also for Forrest to be able to butcher maybe a hundred or a hundred and fifty more animals a year. And that's about as big as we want it to be. It's going to be pushed way, way back off the road. These people that are here today, they won't even see it. They won't even know what's happening back there. Everything will be killed in the back, cleaned up and moved on. We live there. We don't want it to be, that's what we're doing. We're trying to make it nice. We're trying to make it so the beef that comes out of there tastes good. It's something people want to buy. But I also want to say one thing. These people that have moved in, they may not realize that that's an agriculture community. It always has been. There was dairies all the way around you guys before that house was, you know, before you bought that house. You need to do your homework a little more before you buy a house. If you don't want agriculture things happening, you shouldn't buy a house next to agriculture. Matt Olson's been there his whole life. He knows, but his wife don't know that there's cattle three feet from her yard. There always has been cattle there. My uncle owned that house. He built that house. But the cattle corrals were right by the house. That's just the way it is. Unfortunately, my cousins all wimped out and my grandpa made a millionaire's and they moved on. But I'm not going to do that until I have to. So, I mean, I hope that kind of tells you what our plans are.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
How many animals are you slaughtering there right now?
We're not doing any at the moment.
Okay.
We just haven't, I'm not a butcher. And so we're not doing any at the moment.
Okay.
We haven't been doing any animals there for quite a few years since the ranch has kind of faded away.
So when was the last time any animals were?
Oh, maybe ten years ago. I don't know. Forrest's dad was probably the last one that butchered cattle for us there. He's saying five years, but.
Five years?
Yeah. But since then, his father passed away unfortunately and since then, we just, we've been trying to get outsourced to do it and we've had some terrible problems with that. We've had some other people butcher some cattle for it and you can't even eat it. We just threw away about four hundred pounds of hamburger that I wouldn't even eat. Told my wife, get it out of the freezer, throw it in the garbage. But that's because the butcher shop or the garage that it was cut up in was not set up for. We don't want to be like that. We want to have the right equipment, the right coolers. I'm well invested. I mean, I'm committed to invest the money to do it right. And that means there'll be no smell, no stink. There will be a little traffic two days a week. And that's it. Dropping off two days a week. We're not dropping off every day. We're only going to plan on killing twice a week. You know, we may do some of ours, but they'll come in the back through the fields, nobody even know.
I have a question, Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
You're talking about time because you're talking about tires and how long it's going. If, if this were to go to be approved, what's the timeframe of getting the operation up and working?
Well, I, I hope to be going by fall because I have just weaned a bunch of calves, fat calves and I have no way to get rid of them. You take them to the auction and you just, you just as well quit now. I mean, this is our only chance to make a little extra profit on what we're raising. We used to raise bulls for a living and, and it was a good business and we made, but nowadays it's just not feasible. We still raise a few, but this is kind of our last chance to find a way to make our farm viable.
It was, there was some concern in reading the report about the road and improvements on the road and widening of the road. Would you be in charge of that or what are you expecting out of that?
I don't expect that the road needs to be widened. They've been building on that road the last twenty-five years. When I was a kid, when a car went down the road, we looked out and said, who the, excuse me, who was that going down the road? And now it's a steady stream of traffic going back and forth down there. It's, it's all changed, you know. The road don't seem to have any troubles. It's, you know, the biggest thing is the Olsons, which live up the street, is the speed limit. When the people fly by their house, I was always taught as a kid, you go past the Olsons at twenty-five miles an hour else you get your butt kicked, so.
Is it currently paved now or?
Yes, yeah. I believe it's at least fifty or sixty-foot road, so.
I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I say something really quick about that, the road situation?
Why don't you stand up and use the microphone so we can get your recorder? State your name.
Josiah Olson, I'm Bill's neighbor. And with this road thing, guys, we drive combines, swathers, tractors up and down that road all year long. A swather is going to be wider than any fire truck or any thing that would ever go down there. A combine, you know, you're, it, they're just, we, we drive, you know, that road has so much traffic. We drive big equipment down there that, you know, we can drive our swather and our combines down there with no problems.
Double pole hay semi.
Yeah, semis full of hay coming out of the field with pups on them. They have no problem, you know, navigating that road. It's not too narrow. It's, you know, in my opinion, I think it'd be fine the way it is, but, you know, master plan down the road, when there is houses and everything, it will get widened sooner or later. But that was just, you know, my two cents on the whole road thing. And then, I mean, I can wait till Bill's done or I can continue on with what I have to say as well.
I think I've done unless anybody has any more questions. I wish Gordy and John was here, but I'd sell John another bull while he's here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Josiah.
So my, I'm, I'm really going to just reiterate a lot of what Bill said. You know, we, we won't be doing as many as Bill will. We might be doing twenty a year if we're lucky. Ours are going to be about split fifty-fifty with some beef cows and maybe a few bison, because we raise bison. You know, like Bill said, it's, you call tires, you call any butcher shop, Tremonton, Idaho, anywhere in there, they're all booked out a year to two years. You can't find a place for people to kill animals. And I'm, I'm really in the same boat as Bill. I have all these animals that are sold, people want them, but I can't, I can't get a butcher. They're booked out for a year and a half. So we have, by the time, like, exactly like Bill said, by the time I can get a date, there's no point in even having them. There's, they're too far gone. And with certain butcher shops, they can't kill animals over twenty-four months old. J B S and Hiram's that way. If it is over twenty-four months old, they cannot take it. They will not take it. So if I have to wait a whole nother year and a half, I'm going to be, my animals will be over that twenty-four month period and most of the butchers won't even take them. They will if I'm the one that's going to be using the meat. But, you know, I can't eat twenty animals. You know, it is, it's really, it's really hard. I mean, I've, we've, raising these animals, we've seen this need for the past, you know, four or five years. Because even a couple of years ago, you'd call tires, you'd call these other butcher shops. You know, we're still six months out. And especially since COVID hit, as soon as COVID hit, it went crazy. There's butcher shops up in Downey that I've been doing business, business with. They won't even book out into January twenty twenty-two. They're booked out all the way to January twenty, or December twenty twenty-one. And they, they just can't take anymore. They don't know how it's going to go. They don't have enough people to run and work at that facility. So it's, you know, like, it's a lot of what Bill already said, it's we, the neighbors around us, and I know I'm not the only one, you know, there's going to be multiple neighbors that aren't here that would say the same thing. We need a place to kill our animals. And, you know, some people don't like it. You know, I, I can understand that. There's a lot of things that have gone on in the county that I don't like, but sometimes you just gotta deal with it and go along with the flow of it. You know, it won't be a Miller's down there. You're not going to bring semis. And I'm close enough that, you know, I'm less than half a mile away. So for me to take animals down there, it'd really be no different than me taking animals to a different corral. I load them up in the trailer, drive them a mile away and drop them off. And that's just for me. I am also here for Bio Minerals Technologies. We are a research study farm that we deal with animals, crops, you know, plants, things like that. And even the owner of the company, I deal a lot with the animals, but, you know, I report to him and I'm telling him all these things, you know. I had to call tires. You know, I called tires six months ago. Can I get animals that aren't even born yet on their kill, you know, schedule? Because that's how far out they're booked. You know, I'm, I'm booking out animals that aren't even born because I don't have a place to send them. And that's really kind of, you're playing, you know, you're flirting with the line right there because I have all these animals that aren't even born, that are sold and, you know, don't have a butcher to take care of them. So it's, you know, in, in just my opinion, I, I really think we need it. A lot of the neighbors and people out there too, that aren't here, would come up and say the same thing. We want it here. We need it here. There's a very, very, you know, good reason to have it here. And with the whole, you know, the numbers thing, if, if they can only handle twenty percent over what they want to kill, you know, if this thing could go through, I would adjust my numbers just so I could be under that twenty percent and allow other neighbors or farmers or people raising their own to be able to kill there too.
Thank you. I'm going to
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
See if we can bring your comments to a close so we can give other people an opportunity to speak if they so desire. But thank you for your comments very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
I am Dakota Olson. I live on the road where they would like to put the butcher shop. I'm fifth generation in Young Ward. I've lived there my whole life on our family farm. Just to touch same bases that those guys did, there's no place to kill our animals. Nobody will take them. No one is open to taking animals because they're booked to the max and they don't want to get above their heads. Road, speaking of traffic, it's not going to get any worse than it already is. Everybody already does whatever the hell they want out there. I mean, it's semis there, combines, I mean, it's, the traffic is what it is. With the growth of the housing up the road, everybody goes on their Sunday drives down our road to go see the farmlands. So it's not going to get any worse than it is. But I think that it does need to happen because same page, I have lambs and other cows that I need harvested, have them sold to the purchasers of them and I have no place to harvest them. Nobody will take them at all. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's the same broken record as what everybody else is saying, so.
Thank you.
Just figured I would put in my two cents as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment?
My name's Forrest Olson. I'm the one who applied for the rezoning to be able to build the butcher shop with Billy. I'm just here to tell you the reason why I'm doing this. I just see a great need for our community and I'm just trying to do it the right way. I'm just trying to approach it so that it actually gets done in a way that is, in a healthy sense. You know, my, my idea of doing this is be able, like Billy said, we're going farm to table. I'm not trying to kill five million cows. You know, I won't do in five years what Miller's does in a day. That's just the idea. And obviously, there's going to be concerns. You know what? If somebody was building something next to my house I didn't want, I'd probably fight against it too. You know, totally understand it. But I just want to let you guys know that our job is to work really hard. We grew up in that community. Just like Billy, I've grown up there my whole life, been able to do stuff like this and I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Because you might be the one, I don't know if it's a question or anything, but limiting principle for.
Oh, the limiting principle?
Yeah, how many animals can be processed through that facility?
So according, according to the county code is, so the owner of the property, if we do, so there's nothing actually stopping us from building the facility right now on the property, okay? We can still build it. The problem is what we, the reason why we're going for the industrial way is like Billy was saying, because we want to help our community. So we could still build it right now. Just seventy-five percent of the animals we do, or eighty percent of the animals, have to be, according to the county code, his cattle that are on his property. So that's where that goes. So, but if we go to the industrial zone, then that doesn't limit us to be able to tell somebody, you know what? I, I need a cow killed. And I'm like, sorry, I already killed five cows for somebody else this year. You're out of luck. You know, it just, I don't like the idea of the limitations that it puts on, if I was to open this business, on me to be able to have to turn people away because their cattle wasn't raised in the right, or their pig wasn't raised in the right place.
So, so they're going to the industrial zone, Chris, and you can tell me this. If we go to the industrial zone, there's no, or is there a per animal throughput that would be limited or anything like that, or what would that do?
I'm okay. This is for everybody. So the, the necessity for them to go to the rezone is because, like Forrest said, they're bringing animals from off that property that isn't the owner's property to the site for slaughter. So that kicks them into a different category. Now, there are different categories that we're starting to look at. When we had this discussion with the planning commission, after the fact staff met and we talked about some other options. Like Forrest said, he's doing what is right, what the code requires. So we're looking at what the code does require and if there are some, some maneuverable options within the code or if we need to make some changes to the code. Within the USDA requirements, there's a U D A F designation. It's a smaller type butcher shop like they're describing. We think there's room in there to amend the code, to include that as something that would be permitted within the agricultural zone with certain specifications, obviously. But we just, we just started that discussion based on the information that, or the application that Forrest has brought forward. So it's very much on the front end. You haven't heard about it. Planning commission hasn't considered it. It isn't any sort, in any sort of draft form for review yet. So that's the big trigger is, under the code, they can't bring stuff to the site that's not grown on the site without a rezone for slaughter. So, yeah, if they just did it that way, it wouldn't be an issue.
But if we, so, so the two choices, if I'm hearing you right, we could do the industrial zone now, kind of green light it through, or we'd have this option to amend the code to expand the use of the agricultural zone. Timeframe to do something like that?
Six months, realistically. Could be done faster. But we've got a lot of stuff on our plate with alcohol ordinance, cannabis and other things.
Well, cows sound a lot better than those.
Cows are a lot easier, lower hanging fruit than the other two. There is no question. So we, we could pursue those things, but those things have a timeline attached to them that's critical for the county for different reasons. So we have to prioritize those pieces. As much as I'd like to dig into the stuff that we're looking at, because I think we could resolve it fairly simply and quickly, I know those other things have pressing timelines that have to be accomplished. So I'm, I'm on board with Forrest. I think it makes sense what they're talking about. The biggest trigger is when you put an industrial zone in a location, you open the door for other uses.
That's, that's the key right there.
And so I have nothing against what they're proposing. I think it's smart. I think it's really smart, but we've got to work within the parameters of the code. And so that's why you saw the recommendation from the planning commission, who's very much focused on that piece. And that's why we had to revisit the code and say, there's got to be some better options for what they're proposing that makes sense.
Chris, the road, the issue about the road? If it's not an industrial zone, does the road manual standards change so that they wouldn't have to build as big of a road, or is that not an issue?
Does that fall into the conditional use?
Yeah, so that changes. When we go to, um, it depends on how we approach it, so that's a good question for us. So when we go to, uh, consider what might be a different option, before I go there, let me answer your question, I'm sorry.
All right.
So, the industrial zone is not part of it, and if it's simply considered agriculture, agriculture under the current manual is exempt. There are some specific exceptions to that, but it's exempt from meeting some of those parameters. There, there just isn't the significant traffic to drive an improvement to that road from what's already there. And so that again seems to fit into this idea of, we need a different designation for what we're talking about, that fits with that type of use, that's smaller scale. We just need to be very clear on how we define that. And there is some federal guidelines for how we could do that. So I think it's possible, but back to the road, if it's zoned industrial, the improvement could be considerable and not, it could be cost prohibitive. I don't think it's a good match for what they're proposing, but that's what the code calls out for that zone. Oh, Matt, Matt is our county engineer, public works director, he can address that specifically.
Currently, the code does not allow a local, or does not allow a rural road to service an industrial, commercial area. And the road that they're on is classified as a rural road, so they would have to improve that to a local road standard. And that's, currently, that would be about one foot of asphalt on each side. So not a huge, not a huge jump, it's not a dirt road. Um, they do have some geometric issues that are kind of on the property as it, as it makes a bend around the pond. So there, there may, there may be some improvements that would be required there to also meet the local road. But it's on a dead end and doesn't really service, so that's why it's classified as a rural road. But it's not a true road, it just, once you go down the road, it kind of ends in a dead end, and there isn't really, it's not a network per se. So that's why the road is being brought up, but as a rezone, we don't look at what needs to be improved, we just do a current inventory of what the road is and, and report that to the county.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address this?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
My name's Randall Olson. I have the property just east of ARO Ranch, and we were, we're the ones that raise the bison. We also have longhorn there. Last November, when we work our bison, we had a herd bull that probably weighs 2,500 pounds, gore, a younger bull that wasn't raised on that ranch. And, and if we could have had Forrest's facility there, we could have processed that and sold that, maybe made up to $5,000 on it. But as it stood, we had to just put it in the freezer, which, you know, we have other meat, so we gave a lot of it away. Uh, so there's a need for something like that out there. And I invite you, if you haven't been out there, like Mrs. Tidwell said, take a drive, go look at the bison out there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, John, you were, you were making a move first, and then we'll go to you.
John Drew Providence, city mayor. Let me tackle this issue, addressing the council directly. In my plea to you, we had a meeting of our parks master plan committee today, and we as a city cannot find land to acquire for park space, green space, right? If we as citizens in this county wanna retain green space, keep these guys in business. That's my message.
Thank you.
Lots of pros, not very many cons here today. Um, my name's Matthew Olson. I live, uh, on the property that's directly adjacent to the proposed zoning change, uh, west and north. Uh, my property lines meet up with this property. I have lived there minus six years, my entire life. Uh, I grew up in the home, uh, where Pelican Pond is, where, uh, Travis and Madison live now. Uh, I, I do know that they have slaughtered cows there, uh, in the past as, as part of the Jensen-Herford Ranch. Um, I, I am opposed to this, not for the business aspects. I absolutely understand everybody's concerns about the business. I want to approach you, uh, in, in, I guess, in, in the way of, of looking at an industrial zone, uh, which is going to be dropped right in the middle of what essentially is a residential agricultural area. There, there's six homes directly affected, there's, I think, some 15 homes within a quarter mile, uh, 19 parcels within a quarter mile buffer. I, I actually wrote down like a statement, and if, if I have a moment, I would like to read through it. And I wanna thank you, council, for allowing us to have this conversation. I wanna highlight, uh, two points in, in the denial, uh, by the planning, uh, recommendation. The first, uh, bullet point, the location of the subject property to be rezoned is not compatible with the purpose of industrial zone and will conflict or have deleterious effects upon the surrounding properties. They've, they've spoke to the, uh, to the note too about, uh, I think, the, the low, the, the road. Uh, reading through the notes from the planning meeting, uh, specifically to the bend right there by the suggested property, uh, is unsuitable for, uh, industrial and will have to be, uh, taken care of. My, my question to that, and, and you brought it up, who, who owns that responsibility? Who's gonna pay for that? I don't feel like it should be the taxpayers. Where they're talking about widening the road by a foot each side, that does go into the Pelican Pond watershed in my mind, because they're gonna also have to, if they widen the road, they widen the gravel. Is there gonna be any kind of environmental impact study on that? Who's responsible for that payment? Um, there's, there's, uh, a lot of, of, the road's fine, and it's, it is fine for a county road. And it does handle, uh, a good bit of heavy traffic, but if, if we are talking about specific to an industrial zone, the road will need to be fixed. Um, that, that sounds to me like it's, it's kind of a, a fact. And then that brings up a whole bunch of other questions. Uh, the bullet point three, coming out of the planning zone, the subject property to be rezoned is more appropriate and consistent with the purposes of agricultural zone due to limited access, presence of residential properties, and sensitive areas being, being the, the Pelican Pond water, uh, and will conflict or have deleterious effects on the surrounding properties. I think it's unfair to, to label this as a butcher shop. When I think of a butcher shop, I think of a retail space, something like what Forrest's father owned on, on Main Street, where you would walk in, you would have, uh, the meats there that have been processed to a point, there was no killing. You'd go in, you would ask for what you need, the butcher would then give you a fresh cut of what you need. This, this really is a slaughterhouse. This is, this is a place where they'll be bringing animals in, and they'll be, uh, putting them down, euthanizing them before butchering them. Um, which brings up some other questions in my mind. They've, they've, in the planning meeting, Forrest talked about the offcuts going into a dumpster, and Cash, Cash County or Logan City would, would be able to pick that up, uh, on call, same day. Um, but, but what about the entrails? What about the blood? You know, average cow's got 10 gallons of blood. Where's that going? Is that going in the dumpster? Have they got some sort of containment? If there's a spill, do they have any kind of mitigation plans for, for hazmat, for, for, for ground protection? Um, I'm, I'm interested in understanding the, the chemicals that they're gonna be using to keep the place sterile. What happens if they have some sort of spill? What, what's, what's, what's their, their plan for, for mitigating any kind of hazmat issues? Uh, their pest control issues? If this is gonna be a business, I feel like those questions should be answered before we talk about moving from an A10 agricultural to industrial. It's, it's, to me, it's just, it's a horrible idea to put an industrial zone in the middle of an, a, a residential ag area. Uh, the business is needed, and it sounds like there's a lot of business that's needed. And I know that there's, there's some cities that have that industrial, uh, areas available, but they're maybe not suited to Forrest and Bill's needs. Um, I spoke with Ron Salverson, uh, the Hiram City Planner, and he, he told me that, that he had zones that would, would suit this. Fair, I guess, to let you know, Ron Salverson's my brother-in-law, and that's why I reached out to him. But the cities have the ability to handle an industrial zone like this. It doesn't need to be out here in the country. It just, it just, it's, it's bad policy in my mind. And I guess that's, that's it. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Madison Parish. Travis and I bought the house on Pelican Pond across from Matt, actually the house he grew up in. It's true, I am not from Young Ward, nor the state of Utah. I'm an ER nurse from Washington State, grew up in the city. A benotz to Mr. Jensen, I did a lot of research before purchasing this house. I chose to live in the country, to get away from the city. My concern with this is that this is a neighborhood. You have plenty of people that don't raise cattle to be slaughtered. I understand that there is a need for butchering animals, but this, this idea of rezoning this piece of property in the middle of a residential area seems very opportunistic. I mean, I may not be from the country, but I can see and notice when somebody's trying to take advantage of an opportunity. I understand that they have stated that this is gonna benefit the community, but it very much seems like it's going to benefit a certain group. There's nowhere to get cows butchered. They need their cows butchered, and so they wanna take advantage of this property that they already own and rezone it for industrial. But the biggest concern of mine is, what if Forrest's shop fails? You now have a piece of property in the middle of a residential area that's rezoned for industrial. The Jentsons can come in and utilize that property, sell that property, I don't know, to Chick-fil-A, for all we know. And they have so much land, so I don't understand why it has to be this piece of property that's budding up adjacent to Matt's property, where he gardens, plays with his kids, raises dinner with his wife. I mean, and also with the road, that is not, I understand, I, you guys all grew up in Young Ward and you think that this road is busy. This is not a busy road. Yes, there are big farm equipment that utilizes it, but there's not a lot of people on that road, and that road is not safe. That bend is not safe. My pond is on that bend. And if, you know, a young girl was just killed on a bend just like that, this is not a safe road. And if you expand that road, it's going to affect our pond. So, I don't mean to be rude, but I just feel like this is a great idea. I think Forrest, what he wants to do is wonderful and inspirational. I think there's other areas to do that. I think that this is people trying to take advantage of an opportunity. And, you know, when I, we bought this house out in the country, I had no, you know, I don't know what it's like to live out in the country, so I asked my coworkers, you know, for advice. And they said, just be a good neighbor, like, don't fight over water and be a good neighbor. And I've tried to be a good neighbor. And I think we've tried to be a good neighbor to Forrest. We don't want to squash his dreams or hurt anybody's company. But I kinda posed the question as, have you been a good neighbor? Because you didn't notify us, any of us, of this idea. We just got a letter in the mail. So, I don't know. I think it's, it's wise to just consider that, you know, people bought this house, I bought this house, I saved up to start a family, and not have my kids run out into my front yard and see animals being slaughtered. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Travis Murray. Um, just so you guys know, I actually used to work on a dairy, and I have no problem living around agriculture. And, uh, but like, these guys have kind of mentioned, um, this is in an area, if you had it on the map where they, this, these guys had it last time, it's, there's a bunch of houses right in there. Uh, I know the Jensen's own quite a bit of land, and I have no, I, first off, I have no problem with the butcher shop, at all. The idea of having one is great, and I know for a fact, we need them, you know. My problem is they have, you know, hundreds of acres. Why does it have to be there? Open one, for sure, but does it have to be right there? They have more land, it doesn't have to be right there. So, like I said, I want this to work for you guys, but it's just right there, and I am the new guy in the community. But, um, you know, I don't, it sucks that this is going on right, pretty much right when I move in, but, uh, I'm just, I have no problem living around cattle. I worked on a dairy farm for quite some time, you know, I, that's not an issue to me. It's just right there in that little section, when there could be other places down the road or wherever, just right there in that little area just seems, you know. And not to mention, what does that do from the pond directly across the road for that little bend? You know, what could that get affected? Not in the section on my property, but across the way, there's bass and trout, there's turtles, believe it or not, you know, birds.
We have turtles.
Yeah. But, um, you know, what does that happen if something, I don't know. Like I said, I'm all for a butcher shop. I don't wanna be a bad neighbor or anything. I just, you know, I'm not trying to offend anyone or cause trouble at all by any means. It's just, it seems like there, especially with how much land they do have, it could be somewhere else, and that's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Someone else stood up in the back? Invite you to come forward if you still would like to.
I'm Melody Olson. I am Forrest Olson's mother. I just think we need to calm any unrest or concerns and worries that people have, because it's drawn lines in families. As you know, Olson has been the predominant name here on both sides. My husband was a master butcher. Forrest happens to have that gift. This is not Chad Olson's unfinished dream, and the dream squashers down Pelican Pond are out and about, talking to other people. We don't want that. What we are here for as his family is I will fight the opportunistic accusing. Forrest, it has been a privilege to be his mother. Our phone is ringing off the hook for people euthanizing their herds, not having anywhere to go, and losing their entire livelihoods. Every one of us know what COVID has done to this. This is nothing to do with unfulfilled dreams. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work at the end, right? I mean, you work things out, and, and in the end, if people get the help or whatever, that's fine. And then you revisit the rezoning again, and you use common sense. The mere fact that you got a legal letter in the mail says that Forrest is on the hook, legally, and so is Bill, for this, willing to help people. I do not know how many times my husband was called when there was an auction for the Jensen brothers to go over and slaughter a beef, process it out. I don't know how many salads I made for an auction. Right, Bill? And for your uncles and your dad and everybody? But we are all neighborly. I really hate this unneighborly thing. All we have to do is you have to just come and talk to us. We will be glad to talk, quell any, any concerns or rumors, but, you know, the meat chip defense and worry about this has gotta stop. We want to do a service because my son is service oriented. He is the best person I know. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope that we can help everybody involved so that there are no issues.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address this? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Oh, is there someone coming? Okay.
My name's Jake Olson. I'm Forrest's older brother. I just want to let you guys know that any idea of this being a failure isn't even an option. I know my brother. I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little flustered right now, and I just need to, I just need to let you guys know that I think this is a great idea. I think that my brother is probably one of the hardest working men I know. He got the part of my dad in our family that I don't have when it comes to wanting to deal with dealing with meat cutting. I can do it, I choose not to. I choose sales. I'm into that, the industry. But I tell you right now, I think it's a great idea, serving the community, helping people. And I've seen him want to serve people that can't even feed themselves. And I think this is something that needs to be pushed forward and be able to help other meat service-oriented around this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
All moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all. Keep forgetting to take that off so you can hear me. Thank you all for being willing to be here and being willing to speak up. It's not always a comfortable thing to do, but we need your input and we appreciate your, what you have contributed. Our next item on public hearing, it's a little late, but ordinance 2020-11, the BGTS Properties Rezone, request to rezone 5.91 acres from agricultural ATAN to the commercial zone located at 550 West, 8700 South, near Paradise. Again, counsel, you've, we've, we have the summary of these issues in our packet. Do any, does anyone have questions for Chris concerning this, this item? Okay. We'll open it then to public input. Anybody who would like to address this rezone request is invited to come forward and state your name, please, and we'd be pleased to hear from you.
Hello, my name is Brian Bostrom. I am the financial controller for BGTS and Avalon Hills Healthcare, which share a common ownership. Let me, I should probably take an opportunity, like Mr. Jensen did, to kind of describe why we're here today. Would you like me to do that, or does everybody know? So, we, we have a treatment center where we treat girls and women with eating disorders, and they come from all over the place, sometimes even out of the country, mostly from in the states, but mostly from outside of this area. We have a very unique program that's very mission-driven. Private equity firms bought up just about every treatment center several years ago when Obamacare kind of came to be. The insurance companies saw this as insurance is now going to be forced to pay for mental health care, and so they thought it was a gold rush. So, they bought up every treatment center, every residential eating disorder treatment center, but us and one other. And there were, there were many of them. And so, we've remained very mission-driven to treat girls and women until they are ready to leave, where the model in the rest of the industry is, you know, very profit-driven. They're owned by these private equity firms who are flipping them over and over again. And so, people have taken note, and other doctors, referral sources have taken note, and we've been very busy, which has been great for us. We bought this property out in Paradise in 2006, and it has a very, it has two homes, they're actually two different parcels, but we're just talking about one today, that has a great big home on it, that has five bedrooms, five rooms that can be classified as bedrooms, and then seven other rooms that are offices. At the time, the most that we could get because of a county rule was eight licenses, eight beds. And in our other homes that we have, we have, we have 12. The state will license us for 12. So, our growth, our ability to treat these girls and women has been limited to these, to these eight beds. But now that rule is no longer, the county no longer limit, has that eight-bed limit. I think somebody told me they called it an eight-pack, if that sounds familiar to you. So, I came to the county a couple months ago, and all we wanted to do was make a change to this conditional use permit so that we could utilize this other space that we have that's unused, and we could treat more patients. But it's our understanding that in an agricultural zone now, you can no longer have a residential eating disorder treatment center, even with a conditional use permit that allows you to do so. It's just not possible. So, so we're here applying for a commercial rezone so that we can then get a conditional use permit that will allow us to have those other beds that the state will license us for, which should be four more beds. So, that's why we're here. It's kind of a roundabout way to get to, you know, to get to our goal, to be able to treat more patients, but that's why we're here. So, I don't know if there's any, any other questions that you have for me.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this one?
Vic Little, Paradise Town Mayor. Let me preface my comments by, my objection isn't to the business opportunity or what Avalon Hills is doing. My objection is to part of staff's report in supporting the facility through the Mount Fisga Road. Mount Fisga Road is about almost three miles long. Paved road for the facility is about .63. The rest of that is unpaved. Your engineer just mentioned in this meeting that there's a certain criteria for roads that need to support a commercial zone or a commercial property. That's one concern I have. The staff's report did not say that this facility also comes off of our 8700 road, which is in Paradise Town. Want a paved road? If somebody doesn't want to come through that unpaved road, they'll come down 165 in, through Paradise, through that. My other concern is that this will establish a commercial zone in the unincorporated area, but right up next to our property or up to Paradise Town. Staff report, it possibly could be a comment through planning and zoning member, that this piece of property was not in Paradise Town's annexation area, and it most certainly is in our annexation area. Paradise has a commercial zone now. It sits from the Cracker Barrel south, about five streets, half-block out in town. My future concern is that, like this other public hearing we're having, if the Avalon Hills leaves that property and it's, and it's commercial, that could leave us open to additional commercial in that area, and possibly a growth from that. I do recognize that the property is, has some limitations to additional building, but I'm just concerned about future if they pull out of that, so. And again, I want to be clear that I am not opposed to, to the zoning change because of the business. I believe that you got caught up in an ordinance change when they took the eight beds out of the, the conditional use permit and made you go to, and the agriculture wouldn't let you have that. So, I think they got caught into that. So, it affects Paradise Town, and I just wanted the council to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions?
Anyone else? Yes? Yes.
I understand those concerns. I appreciate his remarks. We talked a little bit. I know that you have to look at the big picture and the possibility that we're not there someday, and then what that opens up. This, if this makes a difference to you, this particular piece of property, much of it is really unusable slope. And so, the, there's not a lot, basically, is what I'm trying to say, that somebody else can do on the property. There's, there's two homes on it, and there's not a lot of other usable space. So, I mentioned that just so you know that this isn't a property that could easily be turned into, you know, some big factory or something that would be undesirable to, to the neighbors.
Thank you. All right, do we have? Yes, you may come forward to the microphone.
I'm Dr. Benita Quaken Bush. I founded Avalon Hills about, we have three homes. First property about 18 years ago, and currently I'm focused, there's several directors in this back row here. I understand everything that you said. I just wanted to state for the record, my intention is not to sell. I didn't sell to private equity, and there was immense pressure to do so. My plan is to, actually, I'm on a succession to, you know, management team, and plan for all these youngsters to carry on. So, I understand the concern about what will come next. This is, the four additional beds is, that's the maximum of what we need, and I'm not planning on selling. And actually, I have succession planning and director of development for these people to work as hard as I have. So, I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. One last call. Anyone else? Yes, please.
I'm Bob Thomas. I'm a local CPA, but I work closely with Avalon Hills. So, I just would say, I think the county as a whole is fortunate that Avalon Hills was able to purchase this property to begin with. It was originally already permitted and allowed. It was going to be a home for young men with pornography and other addictions, and they were going to put that right next to a home for young women with eating disorders on the contiguous property. I don't see how that would have ever made sense, but we were fortunate that Avalon Hills was able to acquire that through BGTS, which is Benita's company, owns both the operating side as well as the real estate side. I just, I don't feel like this would add anything traffic-wise. It's already approved for eight beds, and it's just adding additional four beds. If there were a way for the county to see its way to add, add this ability to add four more beds to the conditional use permit under the agricultural zoning, I could see that as being portuitous for both sides and not having to rezone this as industrial. It's purely a matter of the ability to add four more beds to an existing facility, and we're required to go through the prerequisite of rezoning in order to accommodate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. And again, thank you for helping us to understand the issues and being willing to speak in our meeting tonight. Okay, this ends our public hearings. We'll now move forward to initial proposals for consideration of action. And again, this is consideration. We don't have to act on these tonight. And they are for both of these ordinances that we had public hearings on tonight. Ordinance 2020-10, the butcher shop rezone. Is there, is there any further discussion that anyone has on the council?
Well, the only thing I would say is the two things that I've learned about this is land use and zoning is a blunt force instrument, and we've got some real surgical things we have to do. And there's also the law of unintended consequences, and both of these, I think, have that. So, personally, I would like to do a lot more research. I wouldn't want to act on these tonight for sure. I think there's some real nuances we can talk through and do some research.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's, you know, the need is there. I mean, it's a dramatic need right now. It's a, it's a need that, to be honest with you, it's an emergency need, what's happening out there. I've seen it. I've been part of it. I don't think it is an opportunistic thing. I think it is, like I say, an emergency need caused by this Chinese virus. So, I think that we were heading to try to be self-sustaining in a lot of things, but then all of a sudden, Chinese virus says we need to be self-sustaining, which is causing some of these issues. Now, because this being a, you know, a Chinese virus kind of kickoff and everything, it's caused economic problems, and I think the economic problems is, is a, something that could really hurt, but it's also can be something really good. But I worry a little bit on, when you, when you change a zone, it is changed and given opportunity for other things to happen within that zone. I think Chris's comment there of, "Let's work within the zone that is most appropriate to be and to occur," which kind of in some ways goes with our other issue, or other item that we talked about tonight, too. But really, I think we need to work within that zone more than a change. But I, I want to hear also, as mentioned here, Gordon, John, I'd like to hear also some of their input, too, and hopefully we can, you know, dig into it more and then maybe address it within a couple weeks here.
Thanks, Dave. Everyone on the council feel essentially the same way?
Yeah.
I myself would like to take a drive out there and kind of look at that area, and I'll, I'll plan on doing that.
I'll just say I'm concerned because it is, Ben said it's a lot of residential, and I get that. I see both sides of this, but I also feel that there's a critical need for, to be able to slaughter your animals and to keep our self-sufficient local. I noticed that during COVID, that there was a high demand for beef. I have a friend who's in the industry, and she had people calling her all the time. She was a rare person that actually had slaughter dates, and I feel, I feel it's a very deep economic and freedom issue that we need to be able to feed ourselves, and we can't do that if we don't have the availability to slaughter our animals. It's critical. But I do agree that making it an industrial zone may have unintended consequences down the road, and I'm not sure that that is the best answer. So, I like to talk to Chris as well and drive out there, too.
Okay.
Also, you know, I agree with the self-sustaining, but there will, I'd like to know what the plans are to deal with the blood and everything else, how that's going to affect. So, I'd like to hear some ideas on how they're going to take care of that issue, too.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that we need to study this in a little more depth before we take any action. That would be prudent. All right, let's move on then to our property tax settlement requests and property tax relief requests.
Did you want to do BGTS property rezone?
Oh. Yeah.
And then we also need to set a public hearing.
We do, thank you.
On that other one, we can go back to that one.
Yeah, I skipped that because we were so late starting.
Yeah, you're fine. We just make sure.
Let's go, jump back then to setting a public hearing for November 10th at 6:00 for the 2020 Cache County budget, opening for the budget.
We've approved that we do, we set the public hearing for that time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Dave. And let's see, to, to handle these property tax settlement requests, we need to move into a board of adjustments.
2020-11.
Can we do that?
Oh, that's right.
Continue that as well? That's, that's still in the initial consideration, so we need a motion to, to do anything with that, or do we just?
No, we just, we can just.
I do have a question for Chris, though, on that. Chris, will you refresh my memory? What's the story between why they have to change to, to get the additional beds? What, was it a county ordinance that changed, or a state law, or what was it?
So, there's been a couple changes. There's been state code changes, and there's also been county code amendments to try and replicate and mirror those changes. The council's set up this standard in the past for the eight-bed limit, for specific reasons. Excuse me, I probably shouldn't go into them here, but the limit was set that eight beds qualified basically as over a home, and they can have folks in there as long as they get the conditional use permit. It wasn't, wasn't requiring a rezone. As soon as they exceeded that, then it did require a rezone and a change. And it's, it's kind of tricky, I'm going to point back to where we've been in the past just briefly, that the agricultural zone used to allow all sorts of uses, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And it became such a problem because then all your businesses ended up in your agricultural zone, and it impacted what was happening with that green space and agriculture, et cetera. So, the push then was to push everything out of the ag zone, so they'd have to go to become a commercial or a industrial type use. So, we were getting the right uses in the right places, the right structure to support it, infrastructure, excuse me. So, we have to be, if we want to blur the line between eight beds to 12 beds, we're going to have to be very careful in how we do that, because we are starting to push back into putting everything back in the ag zone. And I'm going to use my default excuse that I use, I've used for at least a year now. When we finish the general plan, we will have some better zones and ideas to work with in how to accommodate these types of uses. So, I would recommend caution. We do have a recommend, you have a recommendation from the planning commission for approval for that, and I'm not saying you shouldn't listen to that, but I recommend caution when we start amending the code to make some adjustments that we're going to have to address in the next six months to a year, anyway. So, that's all I'll say. There is some background there on some of the group home pieces that we could probably talk about more a different time.
Chris, thank you. That was a very helpful response. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I apologize, I assumed our desire to not take action on these ordinances were in tandem, that both of them were, were that way, so I apologize for not, for not addressing them each separately. Okay, let's move into our property tax settlement requests. To do so, we need to move, a motion to move into a board of adjustments.
I move that we move into the board of adjustments. Equalization.
Equalization, sorry, yep.
You don't need to do that.
Board of equalization.
I don't think you need it.
Okay.
Okay, which are the motions?
Okay. The first one is a...
The elevator's coming up?
Better than the vacuum cleaner.
On the third floor now.
This, this first one deals with a primary residential exemption and failure to file a form in time. Kathleen Howell has addressed this, addressed this issue quite clearly, that the law doesn't really provide for any kind of a waiver of that timing requirement. And there were multiple notices sent out to the, to the people in this case. So, I guess from here, we, we need to, to make a determination whether or not we, I don't know if we can even deny this, can we?
If we can even what, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I, I.
Approve it, you mean?
Yeah, I don't know that we can even approve it, but... There are, I think, six, six apartments involved with this.
I think what they're asking is to abate the taxes that they would, that they're charged, so that they end up being charged the taxes for primary residents on each of them, and that's their solution around not meeting the deadline.
Yeah, there was a, a change in the state law.
The state code.
Yeah, state code changed and required this, and I said they've had multiple notices and didn't respond.
Didn't meet those notices.
I'm going to move that we deny this because, you know, I appreciate what Kathleen Howell had to say, and I feel bad that these type of things happen, but their office sent out multiple notices, and there were those that responded. There were apparently some that still didn't respond, but I just don't see that it's fair to give it to them and not to give it to somebody else, so I would move that we deny.
And these letters, I've been reading all this, these letters were sent out over several months. And there were three letters that were sent out, and one group that got them, they responded, another group, they sent them again, you know, and we're not talking, hey, respond, send it out, and two weeks later, you got to have an answer. It was, it was over way before Chinese virus, way before these other things were happening. I, is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Deny, second that motion, that we deny this.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Our next item, again, is a settlement agreement for property tax. Again, 180 pages to read through. It was, it took some time. Any discussion on this request?
I understand this one is just for the penalties and interest, not the, the taxes.
Right.
Yeah. My problem with this is, this is four years' worth of taxes, and now that it's ready to go to a tax sale, they come in, say, oh, we'll, we'll pay the taxes if you waive the penalties and interest, and I, I struggle with that. And I know that this, this property, I read an article from last year that talked about how it was up for sale along with another property for $18 million, and I think that there's a lot of value in this land. I don't believe that the property owner gave us a legitimate or enough reason. I feel like there's more to the story than what has put, been put forth, and I, I don't understand why they can suddenly pay $200,000 in taxes but not the $40,000 in penalties and interest. So, I'm not in favor of, of granting this. I, I don't think it's fair to other property owners.
I, I feel the same way. I've, I've read through this and, and had the same ideas as the, what you've had, and it's been a, I, I think it's pretty common sense that we just say, hey, you know, we just don't just arbitrarily just pick and choose on this. I think it's consistent for years. I know there's been some concern of the, of the, what's been, what has been used for, and they haven't made the income that they wanted and all that kind of stuff, and so I, I would move that we deny this.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Would there be any additional comments that we offered, maybe all kind of like?
I would be fine if they were paying, what was it, $9,000 a month for, you know, if they want a similar plan?
But I was involved on the initial, thinking recommendations of the 42 properties, there was no interest and no penalty that was being paid. My recommendation, it may be a possible third option, is to accept that first one, you may not have seen that first one.
I didn't.
With penalty on the property that you've alluded to, it has the value, meets there the, no property taxes or penalty is abated, but we also take 42 properties off as a tax sale, that we're then dealing with one which has the value, which, in my mind, would make more sense. But I submitted that information to Gina, that's not what, it's pretty for you, so I don't know.
So, what it, what it was, Craig, was a proposal to pay $88,000 and pay off the taxes on those condos.
And has possession of that check for the last month and a half.
Because it's difficult to keep tracking those 39 condos. That's a, that's a pain. I wouldn't be opposed to them bringing back another proposal that perhaps did that, but this one I absolutely object to.
And only the solution, I think, that yours needs is that when the county gets the penalty and the interest, we have a mechanism, a treasurer that's willing to, to track those, an auditor that's willing to verify that those payments. So, if it could go back toward discussion, that we accept the initial proposal for the most and then include in whatever settlement, if it's agreed to, that they give in current of the 42 properties, because we don't want them to draw them down the road, that could be stated there.
I want to see something in writing. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I, I, yeah, I'd have to see.
I want to see the proposal in a, in something that we can look at, evaluate, and then vote up, up or down. We need to do that.
Want to send something forward like that?
This is, is only to try to get them off the tax sale, so we don't have to deal with that. That was what was initially.
We've actually passed this, so we'd have to rescind this, but if we rescind this action right now, could we then postpone this one till?
Or?
Well, they could just bring another proposal forward.
What's, what's our deadline? We don't want this to go to tax sale.
It's in the November, isn't it?
Well, at the end of November, the current year is relinquished, and it changes the amount that's required for payment, so yes. But I think if, if the recommendation for the council was to go back to clear off the 42, and that the council was leading to agree to make payments on a deferment with no penalty, no interest loss, but require a monthly payment that was tracked, then the county gets all of the interest, they get all the penalty, we have one parcel that we're able to track. Yes, it is commercial rather than residential, which the county would generally like to keep a new head for someone's head as opposed to a commercial building, but there evidently is some litigation that they're not able to operate. So, their income is limited to, to cell phone towers, which is $26,000, and you can see that that litigation happened in 2016, the same day that the taxes, and they were not able to operate, generally. So, they do coincide.
We deny it.
But what, they're behind in taxes, how many years?
Four in the current one.
So, what?
But after November five.
Yeah, and so if we do this again, what's to say they're not going to come back next year and say, oh, you know, we haven't had the income, so I can't pay the taxes again?
Yeah, that's not our fault.
Yeah.
But you've already got the stipulation that the value of the, the property in question has value that gets sold, you sell it, it goes for tax sale, you know?
Well, have them bring forth another proposal, because I don't think any of us like this, and I'm not, I'm not willing to rescind this. So, have them bring forth a different proposal where they pay off those condos and then can defer the payments on the others.
We deny this, and then they have to come up with something?
Yeah, let them come up with something else.
Which I'm perfectly fine. But did that go through? The problem happened, this is that they worked that through, and we submitted that through the individual, and then it changed what you're seeing. The first one is what, I made recommendations.
And where, and where was that change made? By them?
By the auditor's office, apparently.
The auditor's office made this recommendation.
Well, now it's denied, so now they can't change it, so have them.
Which is good, which is fine, but we, permission then to visit a tax payer and make that request from the auditor of our discussions on it.
You bet.
Yeah, for sure.
That's your business.
Council has the discretion to rehear that if they'd like, or not hear it, it's all in their discretion, so if they're brought another proposal, they could hear, listen to that.
As is, we denied it, so talk all you want with them.
There was a motion made and seconded, but we never voted.
We did.
Did we vote? Okay. All right.
Thanks, Craig.
All right, those are the two settlements. We now have several hardship cases. I presume everyone's had a chance to read through those. Do we need to review those? I guess we should individually. The...
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I started with the last one, because it's the one that I have an issue with?
That's the one that ends in 0034?
Yes, the one that ends in 0034. I refreshed my memory by talking to the auditor, I said, the deputy auditor, I guess. And last year, the reason that one was approved, even though it was over, is because they were only $2.50 over, maybe you guys remember that, and so we approved them for 3%. This year, they're more than, what, $5,000 over the, the limit? So, I just wanted to point, point that out in case it would help refresh your memory of what happened.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, they're, they're well over, aren't they? Well, let's address this one first then, 0034. Do we have a motion on?
I will move that we deny 0034 because they are very far over the limit.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. In fact, let's, let's just work backwards. We'll go up to the top.
Sorry, I messed you up.
No, that's okay.
Is there anybody that has, that was the only one that I had a concern on, so I don't know if we want to do them as a bunch, or if there's...
Percentages are, the percentages. Yeah, yeah. So, let's, let's look at 0021. That would, that would fall into the...
29%, right?
29%.
I, I, we approved the 29%.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Next one is 0001. It falls into the 7% of 14, let's see.
14%?
14%.
14, yep, 14%. Any discussion or issues with this one?
Move to approve 0001, 14%.
14%.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, was it a second?
Barbara, Barbara seconded, Gina made the motion, 14%.
Okay.
Well, you got, you got the gong out there hitting at the same time.
Next is 0002. This one falls into the...
44?
44%, yeah.
So, I'll move that we approve 0002 at 44%.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. 0051. This one falls into the...
38?
38.
38%, yep.
I'll move we approve 0051 at 38%.
Second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Next one is 0004.
29%?
29 on that one.
Move that we approve at 29%.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. This next one is 0008. It falls into the...
23%. It's 14%.
14% is what I found.
Yeah, 14%.
14, yep, 14%.
Move to approve at 14%.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 0020 is the next one.
This is 50%?
Mm-hmm.
So, I move we approve it at 50%.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Okay. Last one.
Twenty-nine percent?
Oh, no, that was, that was the last one, zero, zero, two, zero was the last one.
To prove this one.
Well, they both have the same last number, but they're different.
Oh, they do, don't they?
This is zero, six, zero, four, five, zero, zero, two, zero.
Okay, thank you.
Move to prove this one, is it twenty-nine percent?
Yep, that's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, double check me, but I think that was all of them?
I think so.
Okay.
According to my scratch paper, yeah.
Okay. Discussion of Dog Pound Facility, that's probably why our sheriff's here.
I thought he just liked us.
Yeah.
I thought he was here just because he liked us.
Yeah. Didn't have anything else to do.
Did you stick your mask up when you drank?
I'm just teasing her, she's like, I'm sorry you're laughing, I'm like, I've been eating, trying to figure out, I eat hot tamales through my mask. I figured out I'm pretty easily entertained, so it doesn't take much to keep me. Well, it takes a lot to get me, keep me on track, not much to get me off track.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you why, uh.
And I stole one out of your fridge, so.
Seven deputies in our neighborhood all at the same time.
Oh, I think your name came up. I'm not exactly sure of them now, but.
They didn't find me.
You want to lumber it on that?
Yes.
You know, there's, you have rights, I'm just saying, you don't have to say it in the public hearing, but.
Anyway, thank you, this is a long time coming. We've had this discussion for a long time, and these masks and COVID haven't helped. This project or a whole lot of other projects move forward as quickly as we would have liked to have them move forward. But we're back on this dog pound in the impound facility discussion again. We've got a lot of data, I don't know how helpful some of the data is for us to make this decision, but I can tell you what I know in working with us and my discussions with Logan City and architects and everything that we're doing so far. Initially, when we started this, we, um, through an architectural firm, we did have a survey and a study done on how many animals are on intake, how many get adopted, all those different kind of things. And they came out with a ten-year projection on the size of a building that, that we need on a ten-year projection. As we've discussed before, and I'm not knocking anybody over the numbers, but what we've been doing in the past, that doesn't necessarily reflect what the needs are today. It's not our intention, when we open this facility, that we're going to bring animals in from the outside on strictly adoption purposes. Our purposes for this facility are impounds, not, we'll do the adoptions, we'll do those things. We would love to stay in partnership with Humane Society on the things that they do best, but it would not be the intention of, I don't think it should be the intention of Cache County to bring animals from the outside in and end up being an adoption service as well as an impound facility. So the discussions that I would like to continue to have with this council is to work towards the impound facility, contracts with the vet group that we've discussed and worked with. They are a hundred percent a nonprofit, they got that designated to them, I met with them today. USU is a hundred percent committed to give them additional property behind Bridgeland to build some additional, classrooms and things that they need for the program that Cody discussed when he was here earlier. So here's, I'll give you the ten-year study, then I'll give you my own projections, what I think that we need right now. We've talked about this as an ongoing project. I think what we should build today is what should get us three to five years down the road until we can get a handle on truly what the numbers are going to be and what we can track and what I can come back and give you an honest evaluation of what, of what this facility is actually taking in. Not gonna beat around the bush, at some point in the future, hopefully five to seven years, but it could be earlier than that, could be later than that, that there will be another project that's going to have to expand this facility. But until we know what that number is and where we're at, I can't give you that number today. What I can give you today is my agency, we take between, we impound, catch between two and three hundred dogs a year. Of those dogs, eighty percent of them return to the owners. Now, and I'll give you Logan City's numbers too, then I'll tell you why that number, I think, is climbing higher, finding, or, the impounds will be lower, but the number will probably go a little bit higher. And Logan City is somewhere, what they're impounding is somewhere, and they're bigger than we are, somewhere big, probably three and five hundred dogs a year. Their success rate of finding owners is higher than ours. Now, over the last couple of years, they've kind of went out and done their own thing, and they've created their own impound facility. Um, they've just done it on their own, and they're very anxious to get on board with what we're going to do. Matter of fact, they've closed their own impound facility, and they're using, um, Dr., I can't say his last name, Farber, Cody's, temporary facility that he's put together for us until we get this worked out and we can move forward as accounting with this facility. When Logan was running their own facility, they had anywhere between three and eighteen dogs in their little facility at any given time. Um, what all this has done, not only to my animal control, our, our animal control, but Logan City's animal control, it just made our animal control officers work that much harder to find owners rather than just simply picking up the dog and taking it to an impound. Shipping's been a lot better, Logan City's had a fantastic dog shipping program for a long time, which certainly makes it easier if we could scan a dog and find the owner, take it home and write a ticket, or whatever needs to come with a dog at large. But this has forced us to, to better our work and, and not have to impound so many animals. So, ten-year projection. After forty-seven pages, I'm going to break it down into about three. The ten-year projection for Cache County from, um, the group that did the study, what we would need, a building somewhere over ten years in the total square footage, including an admin and vet clinic, somewhere around twelve thousand eight hundred and eight square feet.
Will you say that number again, please?
Twelve thousand eight hundred and eight square feet on a ten-year projection. Um, not knowing what the numbers are, and like I've talked about before, I would be more into discussing somewhere around seven thousand square feet to nine thousand square feet. That would put us into about the one point seven to two million dollar range, as these facilities are somewhere in the two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot range to build. And I don't want, because I'm the sheriff, I don't want this to sound like wrong. Building of, building this impound facility for animals is not a whole lot different than building a jail. This isn't throwing up an office building, there's very specific cage sizes, kennel sizes, paint, storage, sewage, drainage, water, sunlight, windows. Theoretically, building this is a, is like building a jail. You can build a house a whole lot cheaper than you can for, than two hundred and twenty, two hundred and three dollars a square foot. So my proposal, um, at this point would be that we stay within that one point seven to two million dollar range, build as big as we can build with the money that's given to us for this project. And as time goes on, we'll have some ideas of what our numbers need to be, what they should be. And three to five years now, we can take a different look at it, and maybe we're where we need to be, or maybe we need to have another discussion about an addition to that facility.
Would, would this be designed in such a way that would be fairly easy to add on to, to use?
That will be the design. Now, what, I think there's two parts to the discussion tonight that I, that I want to get some clarification on from you, Mr. Chair, and the council, is a discussion on, we got to get the designs drawn, so we know what it is that we're building, and we would build, whatever the design is, the design to be built that you knock out a wall and you continue on, or you build an admin building where you can add an additional wing, so we're not rerunning utilities and rebuilding buildings. We can just continue to make additions as the populations of these animals go up. And they're going to go up, the county's growing, it's not, this isn't a problem that's going to disappear anytime ever. And we need to address it sooner than later. So yes, we would do that. I think initially, when we talked a few months ago, I was going to come back to the council, and I think the, what you folks had told me before, that it'd be about sixty-five thousand dollars to get the plans drawn, and you guys were going to, out of the general fund, pay to get, get those plans. Because of COVID and know, a lot less training and a lot less overtime, I can take care of the plan piece out of my current budget, I won't need that sixty or sixty-five thousand from the council to get the project, um, drawn. Um, working with Bryce today, specifically in over the last several months, what I'd like to bring back to the council, as quick as I possibly could, is two different designs. One, that's one point seven million dollars, about seventy-eight hundred square feet, and what two million dollars would look like, which would get us about ninety-one hundred square feet. And let the council see what the design would look like and get the approval at that point, moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Chad, what about cats? We've talked kind of before about doing cats, where are we at with cats?
We are more than happy to build into this facility to have cat programs. Um, currently, how Cache County does it is we've left that up individually, because we contract with all the different cities for programs, for animal control. If, um, and none of the cities that we contract have asked for that service, because it would be expensive to impound or euthanize or adopt, or whatever happens with them. None of our cities have chosen to do that. Logan City has had a very robust cat program, and they've had donations and things, and they have a trap, neuter, and release program, and they would like to continue with that program. We could continue that countywide on the cities who wanted to do that program, if that was the desire of the council and the cities that we contract, who will be participating in, in a, with this facility. The plan is just to build some, is to build housing in the facility for cats, because we know that's going to come. At some level, that will, that will come.
So cats will be included in some way, because we're going to need to.
We have to, there's just really no way around it.
So this is really a dog and cat impound facility, right?
Animal, yeah, animal impound.
Okay.
You know, another piece that we need to look at too, and I think we've certainly got the property to do that with, is large animals, and I'm not saying we need to build a large animal hospital, but, but where this is being built on county property. You guys know where the horse arena was, was at at my office? On the far east side, it's between the chain link fence and the next, the next businesses. There's about four and a half acres right there that we're going to use to build this project. What we did ten years ago with animals, if we got a bunch of horses loose, cows loose, sheep loose, you would find the first open gate you could find, and three of us would herd those animals into the closest field and let the farmers find their animals. Uh, that option's running out pretty quick. When we used to have to impound those animals, we would take them to the Smithfield Auction, and they would house those animals for us until we could find the owner. Well, that's not an option anymore either. At some point, we're going to have to have some sort of holding facility for large animals. And the only thing I'm requesting with the property we already have is a pasture with shelter, food, and a water source, so we can temporarily hold large animals if we have to go out, pick one up, and bring it back and need a storage place for it. But that would all be contained within county property that we, that we have already.
Maybe we just put them on the bus. There's a bunch of land up north and a lot of money.
Do you, do you, do you have a place for my neighbor's bull right now?
Actually, yeah, we do, you got some electric fence, we can put it down there, I got you. There's a couple of things that I think that are really cool that we're trying to do with the property that we have down there. And it's not necessarily connected to, um, this, but it's with the whole property down there that the county has. Um, the inmates have a garden spot, and this kind of comes into the animal shelter. The inmates have a garden spot that is behind the chain link fence. Um, but have also been approached by Department of Ag and University, Utah State University, and they want to do a five to seven-year project on ecology, soil, those kind of things. And they want a piece of land that they can do these experiments on. And we're going to bring USU down and let them use part of that property behind the chain and let them work with them. I bring that up because they wanted where this animal facility is going to go, and I says, you can't have that, that's out, but you can have, you can use this. I think it's great to partner with whoever we can partner with, especially the big, heavy hitters and people in our community that.
Didn't Dr. Strackwoodine start something down there with the greenhouse program?
He did, and the greenhouse has been very successful for a lot of years. I think working with them on their ecology, or their soil and whatever studies we can help them with, I just met with the grad student yesterday who wants to come down, he's in environmental science, who's going to work with us on waste, recycling, efficiencies, solar, insulation, lighting, a lot of different things. And I would, and I would like them to help us with this project as well, so we can be as efficient as we can. We're not going to build the Taj Mahal, there's not going to be neon lights, it's not going to be a five-story tower. This is a government building, we're not going to build it to make it look like a jail, but it is a government building. It doesn't, we're not going to go nuts with the facade and the landscape and all that, all those things. We have a service that we're providing, and there's a need for the county that we need to provide, and we're going to do it the most efficient way we can do it, and I'm not saying the cheapest way we could do it, and we can go build chain link fence and say that's what we got, but that's not the answer. We need to do it right, but we need to start small, so we, we don't waste money either. We need to figure out how this is going to play out the next few years, and just expect that there's going to be another project moving forward in the next few years, when we see where we're at. Stage two of this, and I talked with that group today, I said, the first part is the money. We got to see if the council is willing to, to pay one point seven to two million dollars to build this facility. And the second piece of this is, is we need a contract between this group, this vet group who wants to do this facility in Cache County, so we know exactly what we're getting before one shovel hits the dirt. So James, we did talk today, we got sidetracked on some other issues, so. I told them to write the contract, just so we can get the process started, but I will get them in contact with your office, and you guys can hash out the details. Is that fair? But I told them I would like to see that done by mid-December and have that contract in place, so if the council chooses to approve the money to build this facility, that as soon as the snow melts, we could have the artwork done, we could have the drawings done, the plans created, and we could turn a shovel of dirt as soon as the contractor is ready. Get the RFPs out, get a contractor pick, and get this project off the ground. That's all I have.
Any questions for Chad?
Would that, Barbara brought this up, would that be something that has to go through the budget, a budget hearing? Or, but it's probably not, because you're already in your budget and you're just relocating it?
It'll have to go through the budget hearing, because it's going to come out of several line items, more than a thousand dollars out of several line items to come up with that sixty-five, sixty grand. So it'll probably, you'll probably see that sixty-five show up in the next budget opening.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Okay, I guess my only question I have for the council is sixty-five grand to spend on plans is a lot of money. And if it's not a project that the council is truly sold on moving forward with, do we want to spend the sixty-five thousand on plans that may go nowhere? I guess that's my only concern, is I don't want to waste sixty-five grand either. I would rather give it back than, than spend it on something that's pointless, so if.
Does anyone have any heartburn about building an impound facility for, in the county?
I'm, I think it's a good idea.
I think we, we need it, yeah.
Put it right next to the butcher shop.
Hey, for the.
I'm not saying we butcher the.
Hey, you said that, I didn't, buddy.
I mean, there, there is a need, there is a need out there, because I'm tired of everyone dropping their cats off at my place.
Well, you know what, I'm getting the other half of that, because everyone wants me to come pick them up, so.
You know, when you call the DNR, when you have like an animal that gets hurt, and you call the, oh my land, you spend fifteen minutes listening to their little, uh, thing that has this list of all these animals that we don't do anything with.
It's jerky before they answer the phone.
All this huge list, and I go, I mean, it really puts a huge burden, because that huge list then comes on where? Animal control.
You know, and we take care of a lot of wild animals. The, we, you call us and say, hey, we got this raccoon caught in a trap, will you come get it? Oh, no, call DNR. Because of that, it's so stinking frustrating, is we go pick up a lot of traps, it's got a lot of wild animals in them, and take them to the nearest canyon and let them go, because it's government, government at its finest.
The other night, about three o'clock in the morning, one of your deputies drove through my place. Was he dropping off a skunk?
It was, it was the other bull.
Probably so. Sorry, but doggone it, after the night, it's good to laugh once in a while.
You don't have two out there, because that was the order, I mean, we got this one.
I did have one, would, in these plans though, you know, I hate to be too one-dimensional on this facility down there. You know, we say it's just, you know, for, and all these animals we're going to be bringing in and everything, but I think there, we probably, there's another facet to some things. We need like some secure storage even areas where you're right down there, where you guys are. There's a couple of the. where you guys are. There's a couple of the needs that we have within the county that could maybe be built with this.
Well, absolutely, and I'll tell you is, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Dave, is there's four and a half acres down there. I wanna build this facility as close to that, to, I guess it's fourth north, as you can possibly get it. I would love to see some storage units and other things built on the back half of that property, because we have storage needs too. You guys, we have storage, I looked at this about five years ago, six years ago, when I approached the council then, and said, we gotta do something with, for storage units. And we have, I have storage units that we pay $100 a month for, for cars used in a homicide that we can never get rid of until somebody dies. We have paid, just my office alone and two storage units that I know of, have paid thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. I actually came and talked with, I think it was Lynn Lemon at the time, and, and Jill's office, 'cause of the voting machine stuff, and at one point, we had like 23 storage lockers that Cache County was paying for. Like, why don't we just build one great big storage unit, and every department can have its own corner?
I feel the same way, because there are even some facilities that could be used for, you know, things at the fairgrounds and stuff like that, that is just being used as a storage, and I'm going, it just isn't making sense, and even, I hate to invest. Well, I haven't brought that up too, to make it out part of the road facility or somewhere. I hate to even build too much even around here.
If we're gonna have a construction.
A lawnmower or things like that, when we could maybe become a little more efficient, a little more broad in our thinking and.
Well, I think we should absolutely build storage, and we should, we should have that as part of this project. We're putting, I mean, I, I picked this piece of the county property down there, because it would never, ever interfere, enter, ever interfere if there was ever gonna be an expansion to the jail. I mean, the jail's built on a 50-year plan. There's three other pods that can come off the current facility. Where this impound facility's going, where any storage would be, would never, ever interfere with anything that's ever gonna happen with the sheriff's office location. It's just five and a half acres. If you wanted to move the fence back 600 feet, you got six acres that's just sitting there doing nothing.
It's just my thought that we just need to be more, a little bit broader in our thinking, and get, if we're gonna do some things, let's not just pigeonhole, let's look at the whole big base of everything we need.
Well, let me ask you this, Dave. I think for the same money, I mean, I could have the architect look and look at the whole property and see what the options were for storage, how much storage space would be available once the facility's built, and I could bring that back to the, to the council as well.
For one thing, it adds also secure storage, because you are within your area.
Yeah, where a jail, I plan on fencing the entire thing. That fence that runs along our east side, that fence is gonna get taken down and moved all the way to the east side, because there's gonna be that much more landscape, that much more garden, that much more storage. It's gonna be cameras that'll have everything just like the current property has. So if you would, if the council would like to, me to do so, I will certainly have the architect look and, look at the whole property and see what it would take to build as much storage on that piece of ground as we can, as we can get without interfering with the project, and we should use every square inch of that property down there.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I, I'd do that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is mine or yours?
It's yours.
Okay. Other business, the UAC Annual Convention is next month, 18th through the 20th in St. George. We've got everybody going with the exception of John. Sad about that.
Did you get the sign-up thing?
Yeah.
It did, but I haven't, I didn't fill it out yet. I'll look at it.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, just one, make one comment about the UAC Conference?
Yeah.
And I think it's, Paul, I think you're, are you on Joint Jails Committee?
No, but I could be. Why not?
Joint Jails is gonna meet with the legislators, the Department of Corrections, the things we do every year. That's gonna be on Thursday at UAC, and I think Utah Sheriff's Association has a great plan moving forward on how we can get those contract, those daily rates higher. But we need all the commissioners and council members we can across the state to help us with that and work with UAC and the legislature to, to pay the counties what those costs truly are, so if you're there and would love to join, love to have you join us on Joint Jails when you see the stuff come out, that would be awesome.
I don't think we have a council member assigned for that.
Well, since John won't be there, you need the next grumpiest person. I'll go and do a sorry job of being John, but I'll.
You can come sit by me. We'll, I'll be John, you can be you, and we'll have a great time.
All right. Uh, council member reports. Before we start, Dave, why don't you talk about the North Cache Spring request? The name we got.
I basically know what you guys know in that email that I received. I think it's just a renaming, basically naming of a spring that's been developed and used just to say, hey, it has an identity at this location.
Did you all see that email?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Well.
Richmond, a little further on, Richmond has a spring that they, I guess they developed, and now the mapping system for Utah and stuff is saying, hey, we need to have this spring named. So they basically came to them and say, go ahead and, rather than someone naming something that would be offensive to everybody, they wanna just bring it, bring a name up, and I think their idea was North Cache Spring.
North Cache Spring, uh-huh.
Very original.
Basically, is the fixie area, and so.
Would anybody have any heartburn with that?
No.
No, but it doesn't get points for originality.
No. But, but, but it does get points for being not offensive to anybody.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll let them know then that the council is amenable to that.
In order to name it, it has to have approval from the, the entity of Cache County.
Okay. Paul, anything?
Glad to be here.
Gina?
Pumpkin Walk was a great success, and so that's why I wasn't here last time, is putting my scene together, and we had a lot of people thank us for doing it, and I saw one lady, or I was kinda walking around, and I heard her say to her family, she's an older lady, this is the first time I've been out in months, and I was so glad that we could do something where she felt comfortable to come and have a good time, so. And Paul's scene was awesome. He helped.
I was gravely injured putting that scene together.
Were you?
Oh, really?
Yes, just, just healing up now, so. But, but whoever was in charge, and by work comes, so I guess I blame myself for that.
We had a nice write-up in the paper about it tonight.
Oh, I missed that. I'll have to go see it.
Barbara, what have you got?
Nope, not, nothing to report.
Okay. Dave?
I think we oughta recognize Lloyd.
I just wanna demonstrate I can endure at the end of a meeting.
Well, you, you know what?
Go ahead.
I've been, I've been chair for nearly two years, and I've been trying to best Dave's record for the brevity of the meetings, and I haven't done that yet, but now I'm working toward having the record for the longest meeting. Yes, Lloyd, we're, we're sad to hear about, well, we're glad for you, we're sad for us.
I still got some months left. Don't go kick me out.
No, we're not.
We'll kick you. We'll kick you, and you keep going. As many months as you want.
Anyway, seriously, it's, it's been a, it has been a tough haul, extremely tough haul, and you know, you should be a lot skinnier than you are. With everything that's been going on, I tell you, I don't know how you've done it, so. The other thing is Fire EMS Committee met today, and we're south end, we're, it's really on track to get going. There, a lot of the city's got the agreements in, everything's working, you know, where it should be, and, and so.
Dave, can I ask you a question on that? So are they contracting? Are they paying a certain amount, or how is that, how is that working? I know the north is having, some of them are having some heartburn, so that's why I'm asking.
The north is, a lot of that is under the direction of Smithfield, as far as the north, north area. As far as it is a population, and then per city, right?
Per capita, on the south end is, is the way we're working.
Per capita, okay.
$15 per capita.
I know, I think the north is talking like per call and kinda get some things in there. I mean, that gets pretty hairy. We just started looking at that, but they don't, I guess the south doesn't have quite the, the draw of retirement facilities as North Logan does, so. Anyway, that's, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we need to move into an executive session now, so we'll excuse ourselves from the podium and go back into the conference room. Be the motion.
Move into executives.
You've got it. All in favor? Who is the second? Barbara?
Lloyd, you're a good man.
Thanks, Lloyd.
Thanks, Lloyd. Gina made the motion, Barbara made the session.
Let's go get this done.
I'm sorry, what's up? Absolutely, I'm happy to talk to you.